Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on March 3rd, 2023. The meeting will convene at 6:00 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001, and the Board of Education Service Unit Number 19 will be held Monday, March 20th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the Board Meeting Room at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is published in the Board Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the presentation of the Colors and Pledge of Allegiance by Bryan High School's JROTC.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Order arms. About face. Forward march.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, Vice President Smith, if you could lead us in the vision and mission?
Certainly, the vision, every student, every day, prepared for success, and the mission to prepare all students for success in college career and life.
Mr. Ray, roll call please.
Cassidy.
Here.
Erdenberger. Foal. Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Juarez.
Here.
Cracky.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Thielen.
Here.
Aide present.
And I did hear from Ms. Foal that she wouldn't be able to join us tonight if we have a motion to excuse her absence. Motion by Ms. Erdenberger, do we have a second?
Sir.
Mr. Thielen. All right, Mr. Ray, please go to the roll.
Thielen.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Cracky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Aide aye.
Thank you, next we have Mr. Masco with the school spotlight.
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, and members of the board. Tonight's OPS Proud Spotlight recognizes students who won the 2023 African American History Challenge. And to begin, I'll introduce their coach, Sheila McCauley.
Good evening. This year, I had the opportunity to coach the South High team and assist Ms. Susan Ernst with the Mars Middle School team. Both teams won the competition. I'd like to thank the board for your support of African American History Challenge and the 100 Black Men of Omaha who are here this evening for sponsoring the competition. The South High team consists of Sierra Thomas and Mackenzie James, and I'm going to turn it over to them at this time.
Hi, my name is Sierra Thomas, I go to South High School. I've been studying African American history since the 7th grade, but I've really been studying it my whole life. It's the way I connect with my dad. I just want to see how far it's going to take me in the future and I'm just excited to where I'll use it.
Hello, my name is Mackenzie, Sierra and I have been studying for many hours over the past three years. We made many quizzes, read many books, and have studied with our coach. And I just want to thank you guys for all your support. Thank you. And now the Mars team will introduce themselves.
I'm Joyda Santiago and I'm in 7th grade.
My name is Henry Gregor and I am also in 7th grade.
My name is Dontel McNeil and I am in 8th grade. We have a fourth member, Cho Cho, and he is in 7th grade, but he's not here right now.
Awesome, well, thank you all so much for being here, do we have any questions from the board? Ms. Erdenberger?
Congratulations, all of you, I was privileged to teach African American history at North High School. So I know what it takes to get prepared for this challenge and to win it. On a personal note, I remember when Ms. Sierra would sit next to me at basketball games and borrow my pens to draw with, and she was like maybe six at the time, but now she's almost six feet, so that's a big difference. But congratulations to all of you, because I do know that it's a lot of work, there's a lot of information. I was going to ask each team to identify the question that when they heard the answer, they went, oh, I knew that. Mars, which, sorry, which question did you miss that you afterwards you were like, oh man, I knew that? Or did you know all of them, maybe that's why you won?
Well, there was one question, they asked it, I forget the wording, and I responded with W E B Du Bois. And there was a small debate after that about whether or not I had gotten it right, but my teammate Dontel actually knew the answer the whole time, which was Booker T. Washington.
Good job, both of you, okay, how about high school, which question stumped you?
They asked us who the first black woman in space was, and we didn't know the answer, but it is May Jimison.
Thank you, okay, well, now you do, thank you very much, and congratulations to all of you.
Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President Head. Well, congratulations to all of you, first of all, thank you for being here, I know it's, you know, coming to a board meeting on a weeknight, so thanks for coming. I want to first give a quick shout out to these two ladies, because Ms. Erdenberger mentioned basketball, and I want everyone to know that these two ladies are also South High basketball players, that I just watched them play several games, so they just finished a fantastic season. So juggling, of course, sports with academics and all of your extras for preparing for this challenge is probably quite a challenge, so good job there. I want to make sure that everybody knows, Dr. Logan pointed it out last week, but Sierra and Mackenzie also were winners last year at Mars, so they are continuing the tradition here with our South High schools. You know, no pressure for the next couple of years, ladies, but we're really hoping that this becomes like a repeat thing, right? But thank you both for being here, and Mars, we wish you guys luck for next year, and hopefully you'll be transitioning over to maybe the South team next year, we're hoping. I do want to acknowledge, though, I know there's some parents out in the audience tonight of these outstanding young students, so if you parents want to quickly raise your hands, we want to give some kudos to you as well for all your support. And again, just thank you for being here, congratulations, well done, and if you need a chaperone for Vegas, I would be willing for the board to represent the board, thank you.
Dr. Holman?
Again, congratulations to you all, I was going to ask, can you all share, can someone share what happens in Vegas? At least the date, how long you'll be there? Anybody?
So last year, we went to Florida, basically, we'll be at the 100 Black Men Conference, so there's a lot of opportunities, like going to youth events and going to like breakfasts and luncheons, and over the course of like four or five days, we'll compete in the prelims, and then if we move on, like the more you advance, the more you'll have time to compete. And the final competition is, it was in this like big ballroom kind of, and there's like a lot of people there to watch, and it was just like fun to see how it turned out, I guess, and I hope we can make it there this year.
Can you tell, what is the grand prize, do you know?
For the high school division, it's a $2,500 scholarship. For middle school, it's a hundred?
Well, nice, we all are, excuse me, we'll be supporting you here from Omaha, I guess if Ms. Cassidy gets to go with you, but we're also very OPS proud of you all, so thank you all for being here, congratulations again.
Ms. Cracky?
I just want to take this opportunity to say that that isn't the only good thing at South High, there are a lot of good things there. But their show choir is really great, and they show the picture of them up there, they're just outstanding, and when they perform, the crowd is just, they're amazing. And so I just love to hear them, and I, probably three or four times I've seen them, and they're always good, and their leader, there are guys that helps them out, he's great too, I don't believe he got to come along tonight. But anyway, thank you for all the good things that happened at South High, and there are a lot of us that went to South High and see what happened to us. Some people may not think that's very much, but sometimes it's kind of hard to get to be a board member.
Yeah, I think we've got four of us up here tonight that are South High grads, so.
That's right, South High love you.
There's room up here for two more of you in a couple of years. But no, thank you all for being here tonight, sharing this with us, congratulations, keep up the great work. Do we have anyone else from the board that has comments? Seeing none, all right, please come up here, fist bump, shake hands, and then we've got an OPS Proud pin for you as well. All right, moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications, Mr. Ryan?
President Head, Vice President Smith, and members of the board, the financial statements for the period ended January 31st, 2023, have been finalized and are submitted for your review, thank you.
Thank you, and normally at this time, we would hear from Dr. Logan, sharing updates with us about her work in the community and with the district. She is not able to be here with us tonight as she attends to an immediate family need. So the superintendent's congratulations report is on the board agenda, it's published online, and it will be posted tomorrow to the announcements section of OPS.org. So moving on to board comments. Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President Head. I just wanted to quickly, it's kind of a South High night, apparently, but I did want to, on a serious note, I did want to just acknowledge the incident this week that everyone has heard about, of course, made national news, but I did just want to acknowledge the good work that came out of that crazy, ridiculous incident, the hoax, but I do want to acknowledge the good work that came out of the staff. I heard personally from several, several different community members, I actually even had a family member that was ironically in the building at the time, and I heard from so many different people how tremendous the staff was in their response, in their protocol, following protocols, keeping students safe and calm, and it was just a really, really great group effort over at that school. We all commend them, I know I speak on behalf of everyone probably up here on the board, that we commend South for the great display of professionalism that all of the staff and administration took that day. So just wanted to give a big shout out to those folks. Also, of course, our community members, Omaha Police Department, that responded so diligently, and if you were anywhere near that area, wow, I mean, it was, my dad happened to be driving by and he was calling me, I think he might have been calling me before I even got the call from the district, but you know, it was apparently quite a sight with several hundreds, hundreds of law enforcement personnel that responded, so we do want to take a moment to thank those folks, in blue, our partners at Omaha Public, or excuse me, Omaha Police Department, for their response. So crazy day that turned out to have some positive, I guess some positive pieces if you can find one, is how great the staff and our community came together, so. Also, on a positive note for South, I just wanted to quickly mention, this past Wednesday, Dr. Holman and I attended a really kind of a fun event. The dance team, they have an award-winning dance team at South, the Lovables, they were supposed to go to Nationals. I'm not sure when Nationals were, I guess over the snowstorm, which was a few months back or so, but they were supposed to go to Nationals along with the Benson Bunny Dance Team. And it was in Grand Island, they could not go because of weather, so instead of having those poor girls that, girls and guys that worked so hard to be able to attend, just not be able to perform, they did a nice little showcase for the community. And it was really fun, it was, you know, quick 15 minutes, but Dr. Holman and I both went to show support and it was really fantastic. Those type of activities don't always get the recognition, you know, they're not basketball, they're not soccer, but I'll tell you what, those gals and guys that were on that dance team, on both of those teams, they did a fantastic job, and it made me wonder like what they would have, what would have happened at Nationals. So they'll never know, the weather permitted it, but just want to thank them for the invitation and keep up the great work, great job over there. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith?
Just very briefly, just kind of echoing some of the things, I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to the Omaha Police Department for their fast and rapid response, being a direct liaison between the community and the police department. We work very, very closely together on a regular basis, and so again, thank you for that, thank you for keeping our parents and our families safe, our teachers and educators.
A lot of our elementary schools had their, um, school play over the, over the weekend, their Disney musical. And so I just wanted to say congratulations to all the, uh, all the students who performed in that. They did a wonderful job. Thank you to all the staff who worked on putting it together. Um, it was a great, uh, great job. I know everybody had a great time. And I believe a number of our elementaries are actually, uh, performing Disney musicals this year. And they are actually performing all of them at the Holland Center tonight. So if you have a time machine and the ability to get to the Holland Center 21 minutes ago, I would highly recommend it. Um, with that, Dr. Holman, you to comment?
Thank you, President Head. Um, I just want to give a, a shout out and to thank, um, all the schools that I've been invited out to spend some time in, um, the past several weeks. I've been out to Ponca, Springville, Northwest, Masters, Morton, Davis, South, and Westview. Um, it's been just absolutely wonderful getting out and seeing all the amazing things that are going on inside of our schools. Um, and it's just really uplifting and heartfelt, especially when you don't always hear the most positive things about our school. So actually getting inside and seeing exactly what's going on, seeing our kids learning, seeing our teachers teach, our, our staff, our paraprofessionals, everybody just coming together on behalf of all of our, our students in our school districts. So thank you all. Today I got to read for, um, kindergartners and second graders and, uh, at Ponca. And I read this book called, um, Betty Bunny Loves Chocolate Cake. And there was a sentence in there, this essentially Betty Bunny loves chocolate cake so much, she wants to marry chocolate cake. And the kindergartners could not stop laughing at that. And it took literally about eight minutes to get them calmed down because they thought it was so hilarious that Betty wants to marry her chocolate cake because she loves it so much. But I would encourage all of our board members, if you get a chance, if your schedule is allowed, just try to get out to your buildings and just get some joy in your heart, especially if you're having a, a not so great day, you will definitely walk out smiling and, and full of, full of joy. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Uh, tonight we have two speakers who have submitted a request to be heard for them. The board has adopted policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. Uh, if you're in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know and one will be provided for you. We ask that you respect the opinions of all those who speak and refrain from applause or other outbursts during the presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not identify the student or staff member and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get the opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will make sure each member of the board gets a copy. As a reminder, with last year's passage of LB 83 of the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Education is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the board to identify himself or herself, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent, unless the requirement is waived for security reasons. Um, in addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have any materials to distribute, please let Mr., please let me know and Mr. Ray will come get them from you. It's now 6:24 PM and our first speaker is Marlon Harrison.
Hi, my name is Marlon Harrison. Sorry, I sound nervous. Hi, my name is Marlon Harrison. I live at 9524 Blondo Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68134. And I've been encouraged, oh, Marlon, M-A-R-L-O-N, Harrison, H-A-R-I-S-O-N. So I'm just, I just want to come here, I just want to say like a positive note. Um, so a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks ago, um, Omaha North High along with Central, South, no, Central, Burke, and Buena Vista, Westview hosted a Black History Month program at North High. And it was a really good program and it was talked about like a lot of things like African Black history, tons of like here in the United States, but also international as well. Um, the fraternities like Omega Psi Phi and Cap Alpha Psi Fraternities, their step show. And it was a very amazing event. And I just want to come on here, I, cause I wrote this message on Facebook and it got like a lot of hearts and likes and shares. So I want to share this message with you. Um, it says, don't let anybody, any, don't let anybody tell you there's nothing positive going on with the Black community in Northeast Omaha or in Omaha Public Schools. These young adults showed their talents, strength, and wisdom last night in the Black History Month event. Um, they danced their hearts out, sang classic songs and their own songs as well. I'm sorry. They performed the, the poems and gave facts on Black figures, countries, programs, and HBCUs. Also, the junior chapters like Omega Psi Phi and Cap Alpha Psi Fraternities stepped their little hearts out. These young adults are super bright and I can't wait to see what the, these young adults do in the future. So thank you, Black Leadership, the Black Student Leadership Council of Omaha, and Mr. Johnson, who is the director of Black Student Leadership, who I think y'all should write here. And Omaha North, the students of Omaha North, Burke, Central, Buena Vista, and Westview for an amazing thing. And that's, and that's all I gotta say, just, you know, just say something positive going on, cause these kids did an amazing job. And I got plenty of videos, if you guys want to see those pictures, I would gladly send them to y'all. They did an amazing, amazing job. And I just, that's just the positive note. I just want, I just want to show some positive out here. Thank you. Come, thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Larry Storer.
Good evening. Larry Storer, S-T-O-R-E-R, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. I'm not going to read all of that. That's for your information. I'll just give a brief summary while I'm up here. But it's once again about the Open Meetings Act and the lack of response from our elected people, not just you, but the city council, the board, and the state of Nebraska. I've been down to a few hearings lately. And I do want to point out that there are much more friendly people down there. They do talk with you, uh, and the security people wear identifiable outfits, uh, different color jackets, so you know that they stand out and, uh, you're aware of why they're there. They are deputy highway patrol. So there's no mistake. But these gentlemen, for example, I might mistake them for a typical citizen that might be coming to get me here at the microphone, and I might object to that. Uh, so I suggest maybe a different uniform of some sort. Some other observations, I didn't hear you refer to the Open Meetings Act. Copy on the board? It's an out-of-date copy? It's not a state copy? It's a board, uh, Board of National Association School Board Meetings. I brought that up just about every time I've been here and it still hasn't been changed. I'd like to see you have an official copy from the state law instead of from the school board association, which by the way, a lot of school boards are leaving that association and probably rightfully so. Uh, what I'm submitting to you there is about the wide, widely different application of the Open Meetings Act between this board, the city council, Douglas County Board, other government agencies that hold open meetings or so-called open meetings. But you know, you took almost as much time to read your rules tonight that I get at the microphone. And it hasn't been very long since there was a young lady that used to come here just about every meeting. Uh, there was never any replies to her, no thank yous, no highs, no goodbyes. I think she's finally given up on you. Uh, there is intent for you to be able to talk with your citizens. But most of these boards say, well, I think our lawyers told us, we will not engage the citizen at these open meetings. Now, does that sound reasonable under our form of government? I don't think so. That's not the intent of the Open Meetings Act. Have you read it? Out in Fremont recently, the board said, or the city council said, well, we don't have a copy of it and we haven't read it. Is that reasonable for an elected body? No. They used to be friendlier until after the election and they replaced two members. And then they started playing around with the consent agenda and pulling things here, pulling things there, telling you you couldn't have it on the agenda, you couldn't speak to it if it's on the consent agenda, trying to pull everything out at one, the whole thing so the meeting's over. But that's not the intent of the Open Meetings Act. So the intent of my letter that I gave you a copy of, to the Attorney General and the County Attorney and the County Sheriff and the City Council and the Douglas County Board, to get the Attorney General and the County Attorney to engage all the local bodies together with the citizens in the civic center. So they can explain to you people what the Open Meeting is, uh, Act is and what its intent is. Very clear, its intent for the citizens to engage their lawmakers. Yes, you can make reasonable rules, but what you think is reasonable may not be what they think is reasonable or what a citizen thinks is reasonable.
One minute.
So the hope of this is a much more effective, uh, Meetings Act and a much more effective way for citizens to address their elected people. Thank you.
Thank you. At, uh, this time we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Uh, so any board member may request that any item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda and, uh, considered and voted on separately. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda this before us?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Thielen, seconded by Ms. Krackey. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Ray, please call the roll. I apologize, forgot to ask for abstentions.
Um, yes, this evening I need to abstain from item I9, Claim C for my role with the Omaha Public Schools Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cassidy?
I also will be abstaining from, uh, report Claim C, item I9 as well.
All right, thank you, Dr. Holman. All right, Mr. Ray, please call the roll. Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Krackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Thielen?
Aye.
Eight aye. Thank you. The motion carries. Uh, moving on to information items, we have item J1A, College Career Academy and Pathways Update from South High with Ms. Susan Christopherson.
As you can see, they're in the front row, all ready to go. Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, Board of Education in our community. Tonight we have an opportunity for our South High School to share an update on the quality of work and experiences occurring and supporting the phased-in, phased-in implementation of our college and career academies and pathways. It is with great pleasure to introduce Ms. Jody Peszek, Principal of South High, who will begin the presentation and introduce the South High team here this evening. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Peszek.
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, and members of the board. I am Jody Peszek and I'm the proud principal of, of South High School. Here this evening with me, I have curriculum specialist, Mary Espinoza, freshman seminar teacher, Alex Menendez, and a freshman student, Jeremy Amaya Bonilla. We are here to talk to you about, excuse me, this is, I've got to move it up just a little bit. We are here to talk to you about our amazing opportunities at South High through our pathways and our freshman academy. Our pathway program began with our current 10th grade class. At South High, we offer three themes, performing and fine arts, media arts, and technology and data. Within the themes, there are 16 pathways that offer students opportunities to engage in expanded content knowledge and to develop career-ready skills and to focus on their career path. There are several pathways that are quite unique to South High, dance and movement, fashion and costume design, film studies, and music technology. I am so proud of the work that our students and our staff have done in developing our Another exciting opportunity at South High is our dual-language program. In fact, we have the only high school dual-language program in Nebraska. The dual-language program is embedded throughout all of our pathways. Omaha Public Schools had 60 students earn the Seal of Bilinguism this year and 41 were South High students. So starting next year, we will begin our journey of implementing the Cambridge Program and students will be able to work towards an advanced international certificate of education. Ms. Espinoza will now talk about our freshman academy at South High.
Thank you, Ms. Peszek. Good evening. Last year, South High School went through our new branding process. This year, we use that branding process to choose our freshman academy team names. The, each freshman academy team based their name on the symbols and words from our new academic seal. So now we have four teams. We have the Explorers, we have Team Hollywood, we have the Achievers, one of our dual-language teams, and Innovadores, another of our dual, dual-language freshman teams. Each team consists of a teacher from freshman seminar and core content areas. We are fortunate to be able to support our dual-language teams with a Spanish for Spanish speaker teacher on each team. The teams we, we, excuse me, the teams meet weekly in PLCs to develop systems of support for students to successfully complete their freshman year. Teams also meet individually with students that need academic and social emotional learning support. Last year, South High freshmen were consistently above the district average on the Freshmen on Track dashboard. South High's freshman academy board meets five times a year to discuss growth and opportunities for freshmen. This year, we are excited to have many board members coming to South in April to participate in our annual mock interview activity as done as part of our freshman seminar course. The freshman academy experience begins even before the school year starts with the South High Jump Start Program. Multiple freshman advisory board members worked with students in collaboration and understanding emotional regulation. It was wonderful to have adult role models from the community give their time in the summer to assist our students with their positive start to their high school career. Last summer, parents had their own jump start to South High to learn how they could better support their students during their freshman year. At South High, we also have a tradition of students helping students. Our Packer Partner Program consists of 11th and 12th grade students that volunteer their time to mentor freshman students and help them acclimate to the high school setting. Over 100 Packer Partners volunteered their time to work in the Freshmen's Jump Start Program and the Freshman Only Day at the beginning of the year. This partnership continues during the school year through freshman advisement classes, where each Packer Partner has a, is a mentor to multiple freshman students. The freshman academy even designed and held its own fundraiser. The students advertised, promoted, sold hot dog meals with their parents and freshman academy team members during the September
for freshmen. This year, we are excited to have many board members coming to South in April to participate in our annual mock interview activity as done as part of our freshman seminar course. The freshman academy experience begins even before the school year starts with the South High Jump Start Program. Multiple freshman advisory board members worked with students in collaboration in understanding emotional regulation. It was wonderful to have adult role models from the community give their time in the summer to assist our students with their positive start to their high school career. Last summer, parents had their own jump start to South High to learn how they could better support their students during their freshman year. At South High, we also have a tradition of students helping students. Our Packer Partner Program consists of 11th and 12th grade students that volunteer their time to mentor freshman students and help them acclimate to the high school setting. Over 100 Packer Partners volunteered their time to work in the Freshmen's Jump Start Program and the Freshman Only Day at the beginning of the year. This partnership continues during the school year through freshman advisement classes, where each Packer Partner has a, is a mentor to multiple freshman students. The freshman academy even designed and held its own fundraiser. The students advertised, promoted, sold hot dog meals with their parents and freshman academy team members during the September open house. Funds will go to a freshman celebration at the end of the year. Each year, multiple enrichment opportunities are provided to freshmen. This year, students will have the opportunity to attend performances of The Nutcracker, Kodo Drums, Gravity and Other Myths, and T-Rex Rising with the Paleontologist. They also participated in a presentation by our No Place for Hate student group. In addition to academics, all freshman students participate in a service learning project. Last year, each freshman student wrote a welcome letter or encouraging note to the incoming freshman class. Incoming students received these cards during registration when South counselors went to the middle schools for registration. This year, students will be participating in the South Omaha Cleanup on Earth Day and a water awareness project. I would like to now welcome Jeremy Amaya Bonilla to share his experience as a student in the freshman academy at South High School. Jeremy? I didn't need the hands, use this.
Nice, okay, thank you, sorry. The transition from 8th grade to 9th grade was complicated. Picking classes, getting adjusted to walking longer distances, seeing new people and teachers. But one thing I truly think has helped was freshman academy. It showed me what my best possible choices should be to keep my grades high, what classes I need, and what I should take from my pathway. Without freshman academy, the entry to high school would have been harder because there would have been no specific person to teach me about all these things like pathways and SMART goals. A SMART goal is a goal that you set that is specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timely. In freshman seminar class, I have been taught to think about what I truly want and how it benefits me in any possible way. One particular thing that has brought me joy this year is this specific moment. I thank my freshman seminar teacher, Mr. Menendez, for giving me this opportunity. I also thank the OPS board members for giving me this time to be up here. As a kid, I never imagined myself doing big things at this age, like being able to work with the superintendent, Dr. Logan, on the superintendent's advisory board, and with Ms. Peszek on the South High freshman advisory board. I have selected music technology as my pathway, and I look forward to my future. Mr. Menendez will now share more about the freshman seminar class. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Good evening. Freshman Seminar is a class within freshman academy. It's a key component in helping our 9th grade students transition into high school. At South High, we have a team of four freshman seminar teachers. We have learned so much from our freshmen in the last two years. It is this learning that has led us to add some essential elements to the seminar course, including pathway discussions and six units of study, each focusing on one aspect of the portrait of the graduate. This school year, we have added social-emotional learning, or SEL, into freshman seminar. This is essential in becoming better people and seeing everyone as human. Each day, we give students a message about resilience and how they can learn and grow because each day is a new day with a new opportunity to make the world a better place. I will now turn it back to Ms. Peszek.
So, as our freshmen prepare to move on to their sophomore year and begin their pathway studies, the freshman teachers know, and they're confident, that they're ready. Here are the pathway courses in action, along with a list of class offerings in each pathway. In our Performing and Fine Arts pathway, we offer vocal music, dance and movement, instrumental music, 2D and 3D art. Continuing in Performing and Fine Arts pathway, we have fashion and costume design, theater studies, including stagecraft and drama, along with teaching as a profession. In our Technology and Data pathway, we offer computer science and robotics. In our Media Arts pathway, we have film studies, music technology, journalism, web design, audiovisual production, and digital design. So that's just some of our offerings there. Thank you so much for your time this evening and the opportunity to highlight our freshman academy and the pathways at South High. Una vez un Packer, siempre un Packer. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here, we appreciate it. Do we have any questions from the board? And we'll start with the left this time. Ms. Erdnberger.
This is so much fun to hear how this, you know, dream is being implemented. And every high school that comes and talks to us is equally thrilled with how it's working out. One of my recurring questions in this, Ms. Christopherson, does Matt need to get up if she doesn't want to? But I feel like every time we hear from another high school, there's another piece of it that I'm like, maybe they're doing it at the other schools, maybe not. Confirming that hopefully everybody's sharing. I particularly thought that focusing on the six elements of the portrait of a graduate in your freshman academy was really, really cool. So hopefully...
Yes.
You figured out how to have everybody do that.
And Mr. Menendez started that work last year because it just made sense.
Nice, okay.
We were always talking about the portrait of a graduate, let's do some units on it.
That, no, that's fantastic. I really liked that to sort of put it into perspective that way. Jeremy, you presented yourself and your, your message very well. Congratulations on having almost completed navigating your freshman year. And I think everybody in the room here who has been through freshman year knows the hardest is now behind you. So congratulations on having done. I just had one quick question, and that is, what path, did you say you chose tech, the data pathway? What was it? Oh, music technology? Okay. And why?
So, what led up to my decision to music technology was a little bit of a struggle. At first, I wasn't 100% what I wanted to do. I liked pretty much everything. I liked construction, I liked working with, with music, with lights, I liked dancing. And it's, it was a lot, but at the end of the day, freshman, like seminar, and then I was talking to my teacher, Mr. Menendez, and then what happened was that we came up with a solution, and what happened is that we started focusing on what, like, I actually, like, liked most out of all of my choices. And that is what I chose at the end. I go to church, and then I like working a lot with the audio system and, like, lights and all that, so, yeah.
That's fantastic. I'm so glad you found something that, that speaks to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Juarez.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make a comment about the Packer Partners Program that you guys have because, like Jane mentioned, I was curious, do you know if the other high schools have a similar kind of partnership set up to help with the freshman students coming in?
Well, I know all of the high schools do have the ambassador program. And so we do have the ambassador program as well at South High. This, I don't know if anyone has as large of a program as we do. It's over 100 students for sure, 130 or so, I believe, at any given moment. And I'm not sure if anybody incorporates them so closely into the, regularly into their freshman academies.
Thank you. We do obviously have student ambassadors at all of our high schools and some work that we're doing specifically with them with direct training. But Packer Partners is very specific to South High School. And so, as Ms. Erdnberger mentioned, one of the things, we're doing some work on Articulation Day, and then also with our College and Career Academies Summer Workshop, we have some time that will be very dedicated to the freshman work so people are able to even share more directly, even beyond what we're doing through notes, curriculum follows-ups. We're sharing these presentations with everybody because we're really working on enhancing what we're doing. And what's so great and unique about each of our schools is the brilliant ideas that each of them help to make it their own and what works really well for them.
Well, I think that that's really a great idea. I know that I would have appreciated something like that. When I was a freshman back at South High, there were so many students in our school, it was just crazy, but somehow you survive it, you know?
Yeah.
Now, and I also wanted to mention, isn't there going to be a music program Thursday at South?
Yes.
Is it, is that the one with the symphony?
Omaha Symphony, also this weekend as well. I believe it's a...
Yeah, I wanted to give that a plug because I'm going to go.
I am going to be there as well, so I'll see you.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, our students were playing along with, with the symphony. And so, was there any other questions for the...
Yep. Ms. Krackey.
You have certainly gained the spotlight tonight. It just seems like everything you're doing is right on point and you're going places with it. And I know when I've gone down there, it's really good. One of the things we did when I was in high school, this, I was involved with a lot of things, and my children laughed very much at me when I told them I was on the Library Service League. And what we did is, we went in the library and we helped straighten books on one of our times when we didn't have a class. So I don't know if I got credit for that or not, but my children think that's the funniest thing they ever heard, so. I'm sharing with the South High students, see how far you've come.
I'm sure it was very helpful.
Thank you. Ms. Cassidy.
Thank you, President Head. Well, thank you all for being here. It's been, like I said, a South night. I have to tell you, I think you're the fourth, is this the fourth school we've heard? Or fifth? Fourth or fifth? But, man, they're all so great, you did a great job, you're a nice presentation. But what I really like about all of the schools is, first of all, we learned something new. Like, you all know, I have a child at South, I know a lot about South, I went to South, but I didn't even know half of these pathways, half of these programs within our pathways. So I'm scrolling through these going, oh, I didn't know that. And I have to kind of reiterate what Ms. Juarez said, it almost makes me a little bit, like, number one, I feel old because it's been so long since I've been at South, but I'm thinking back to even like, you know, when I was in show choir, like, we just know. I feel like we weren't good, they're good now. I mean, it's just, it just shows you how far the progress has come, how far the district has come. The programs are just so outstanding, and it's, it makes you want to go back to high school, right? But I do want to ask a little bit about freshman seminar. And, and thank you, I know, Ms. Espinoza, you've worn a ton of hats at South High School, now taking over freshman academy. Mr. Menendez, thank you for being here, and Jeremy as well. One thing that's really nice and refreshing is, you, right off the bat, told us how beneficial freshman seminar's been to you. And I know that that was one piece, but I think all of us were a little shaky on when they were introducing it to us, and we were trying to decide if this was going to be something that was going to be worthwhile and we should, quite frankly, implement. So it's great for you to just come right out of the gate and say, this has really helped me. So thank you for being here and thanks for sharing that with us. Either, Mrs. Espinoza or Mr. Menendez, if you can reiterate a little bit about, number one, tell us a little bit about what Jump Start is. I actually just got a text today from my 8th grader telling me that she needed to go to Jump Start, I don't really know what it is. And then, secondly, I liked the piece about social-emotional learning. Can you give us a little bit more about what's, what that is about and what, how that's, how that's handled?
Okay, so we will share those answers. I have run the Jump Start Program now, well, since my first year at South, so about 10 years now. And our program, it, what it is, it's an opportunity for incoming freshmen to come into the school, spend some time in the building, and have some team-building activities, have some opportunities to meet students that are from other middle schools and meet some of their teachers. Our Jump Start Program is typically worked with teachers who are going to be working with those students the next year. So they're already working with teachers that they're going, that they're going to be engaging with in the following year. One of the things we did this last year in Jump Start is, the first day, we asked the students to wear their shirts from their previous schools. And that day, we gave them our new freshman South High shirts, and the next day, they all wore their shirts. And so, we just said, okay, you are no longer a middle school and you're not from here and here, we are now one big Packer family. And so, we actually have one of those, the picture of them on here with the kids in the upper left-hand corner. We went outside in the summer and took a picture. So what's really nice about Jump Start is the students get an opportunity to get to know the school and get to know the neighborhood in the area. We usually tour the neighborhood. We're, they're neighborhood students, so they already know their neighborhood, but now they're going to be looking at the neighborhood from a new lens. Now they're looking at the neighborhood as high school students. So that's, that's what Jump Start is.
And Jump Start is over the summer? Is that correct?
It is over the summer, yes. Last year, we did it in August because we had to wait for some construction to get done so we could get into the building. They gave us one hallway, but we used it. And this year, it is going to be the first three days of next-level learning. And that'll actually be the Jump Start Program for all of the high schools during the June 6th, 7th, and 8th. So I'm going to let Mr. Menendez talk about the social-emotional learning.
Hi. You wanted to know about social-emotional learning?
You knew we were going to ask a little bit more about that.
I was hoping you would slide on by, however...
If you can provide anything else.
Social-emotional learning is really helping our freshmen understand their people skills and communication skills. So it's anything from letting them know that it's okay to fail at something, as long as you've learned something from that failure, because you can move on and it's okay, because today is a new day with that new opportunity to make your world a better place to be. And so that's essentially what we do with SEL.
Excellent, it's a much-needed addition, so thanks for offering that.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Just wanted to say that I love the presentation in, in Spanish. I really appreciate the dual-language component that's there at South, really, really strong. Love the Packer Partners as well. And then just wanted to kind of mention, it was, South is very strong, it seemed like it was a very easy transition to go from being a magnet into the Career Academy and Pathways programs. Just wanted to brag a little bit about your program. My son is a graduate. He can read music, he can play multiple instruments, he's built a music studio in his apartment, and he's actually sold a couple of songs. And so, so you think about music technology and those kind of things, you can actually have a career in that. It's just kind of one of the side things that he does, and it's really, really awesome that South offers that to our students. Again, the arts are very important, and so I believe that we need to continue to support those. And just wanted to say, congratulations on doing such a great job.
All right, thank you all. I just wanted to echo everyone else's comments, say congratulations again. Thank you for being here with us, thank you for your work, putting these, putting these pathways together for the school, making it your own, making it unique. You know, we really appreciate that. That's one of the things I love the most about hearing from the schools coming here, is talking about how they've taken the freshman academy specifically and made them unique to your own school, your culture, and really serving the needs of, of your individual students. So I really do, really do appreciate hearing that. Thank you for all your work. We have a couple of OPS Proud pins left over. If you'd like to come by and give us a handshake, high five, fist bump, we can get, we can get you a pin, so thank you again. Sorry, and, after they're done, have a...
I, I just...
Take that. Thank you.
With the presentations we have heard, I know that sometimes navigating the webpage can be difficult. I would love it if on the forward, the front page of it, we could have each high school somehow in that circle or something. And if you wanted to see this presentation, you would push that button, and then you could look at South High, you could look at the other high schools without going and losing your mind while you're trying to find each one of the high schools and navigate it. I think that would help a lot of future students. I think that would help a lot, the future students, so I, I would love to see that happen. That's sometimes what we get to generate and do as we sit here trying to look important or something. Thank you a lot for coming, it was really great.
Thank you again.
Oh, there we go.
There, oh, good. Okay, everybody look this way. One, two, three. Okay, I'll take one more. One, two, three. Perfect.
That's why they won, right?
All right, moving to action items, we have the approval of the Fifth Amendment to contract for bus transportation with Student Transportation of America to expertise, exercise the option year for the 2023-2024 school year. The speaker is Mr. Wakefield.
Thank you, President Head, and Vice President Smith, board members. Here to talk a little bit about our recommendation to exercise the Fifth Amendment to the S T A contract, which would extend transportation services for one additional year. This district believes exercising this option year as proposed, along with the additional supports being implemented, will provide families with the best possible services in 2023-2024. As you know, we've made several adjustments over the past 12 months, actually, over the past 24 months, let me get my timing right, I'm sorry, as we've adjusted routes, as we've adjusted a number of routes, among adjusting eligibility lines and other things. This spring, we are in the bidding process to add augmented transportation, a second vendor to better support transportation services. Those, that bidding window closed Friday, and we're in the process of reviewing the bid. We're also in the process of finalizing a bid to put out on the street, or put out in the bid process, sorry, for a unified call center to provide families with better customer service. We believe focusing on these two items, instead of rebidding the full transportation contract, would better serve our parents and provide better overall service. There are several key adjustments with this one-year addition, and I do want to walk through those really quickly. The initial contract signed back in 2019 by the Board and S T A allowed for a two-year extension. We are limiting that to a one-year extension instead, with the full intent to bid transportation services next school year for the 24-25 school year. This extension does waive the fleet bus age requirement for the 23-24 school year. Currently, S T A has a requirement to maintain a fleet age of, an average of, not to exceed 10 years old, an average of six years old. We are waiving that because it's a one-year option. However, we do maintain the right to inspect each net, every bus, which we do, and any bus that's not found worthy of transporting our students will be disqualified from their fleet. So, we do have the right to override any bus regardless of age or condition. We are removing the provision for call support system currently in the S T A contract. Again, that is because we are bidding a single provider to provide customer service to all of our parents, so we can better control and provide much better customer service. Right now, that is split between two. We are requiring the S T A liaison position. This is a position staffed by S T A to provide us customer service as a district, to help us address parent needs. Currently, that position is unstaffed. We're requiring S T A, if they are unable to staff this by August 1st, we will staff it, and they will reimburse us for the employee costs. That way, we ensure that we have that position to support us. Additionally, we will waive, or continue to waive is what I should say, the rate charges that they char, S T A charges us when we drop below a certain bus count. The original contract provided a higher rate charge, charge to us for service if we drop below 260 buses. As you very well know, we've been below that for a couple of years now, and through our amendments have waived that. We wanted to make sure we continued to waive that, we don't need to pay extra for bus drivers they can't provide. We do, did agree to raise the starting driver salary from $22, which was an amendment the Board approved earlier this school year, to $23 per hour for next school year. That is in line with what bus companies are paying in the region, as we look at that. And we did agree to let S T A increase their service charge to us by 5%. That is primarily to cover that driver cost increase, that salary increase for drivers. Overall, this amendment is projected to cost just below 14 million. I could read those numbers, but I would get lost in the nine, so I'm gonna say 14 million. We had budgeted just under 24 million for S T A services this year, so that is $10 million under what our current budget is. Don't worry, we have plans for those funds, that is the augmented transportation in the call center that will make up that difference. With this, I'm willing to answer any questions you have about this agreement. The administration does recommend we approve this one-year extension.
Thank you, Mr. Wakefield. Do we have any questions from the board? Mrs. Erdenberger?
Thank you, President Head. I didn't know that we, we actually inspected every bus, so that's good to know, and congratulations for finding people to do that. Could you expand a little bit more on what consolidating the call support is, what, because I don't have kids in school right now, so I'm not sure what's wrong with our current system, or, you know, where the, the gaps are and how this is an improvement. I'm sure it is, I just would like to understand it.
Currently, the S T A contract requires them to fund a certain number of individuals at the call support center, and that center operates primarily in August and September, phasing down, and then operating again in January and February and phasing down. We are looking to expand that, so it operates all 10 months, so parents have that service during the entire school year, as opposed to the start of semesters. We also are looking to expand the number of operators. We have data from our current call center provider that provides us wait time for parents on calls, provides us reaction time, amount of time that a, a provider's on the phone, or waiting on the phone and, and available. We're able to, because our contract directly with that call center, we're able to kind of control that and ensure our parents have good customer service. The S T A side, we ask them to control. So, we're, what we're getting is different levels of service, because we have different expectations sometimes than S T A does. We want to unify that level of expectation, so that every parent gets the same outstanding service, it doesn't matter which side of the equation your child receives transportation on. It's really about providing parents the best possible answer when they have questions that need to be answered right now.
Thank you. Ms. Crackey?
I have a question. Let's suppose that a certain bus is really late or something, and the parents haven't yet con, been contacted, but the light is up, everybody is calling you, is that how you address that? All those lights are up, that you have a call waiting there for you to answer that? And probably they've already gotten to it and sent out that message. But otherwise, what happens when all those lights go up?
I, I am not a call center expert, that's one of the reasons why we're contracting that out, but the, they do have a system, and they have kind of a queue, a waiting line for those calls, and they, they work through those calls. Call centers have multiple people working calls, so it's the next available call rep, not just the one person.
Frustrating that can be, that's why I asked the question. If someone, once they see that that's happening, some other team can jump in there and take care of that.
Right. And really, it's about problem-solving for parents. Where, where is that bus if it's running late, or why did a bus not show up today? Was there a breakdown? What, was there a lack of a bus driver? And again, going back to that augmented transportation, providing us another service provider that we can go to if S T A is not able to fill that need. And, and the reason we're asking for the extension of the S T A contract is because we wanted to focus on those other supports this spring, to get those in place, so that when we go out to bid next year for overall transportation services, we have those supports to help us. Really, it's about doing what we thought would provide the best solution for our families, and provide the best possibility of having a bus every day on time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President Head. Okay, you're probably gonna hate this question. Are the new support systems for the call support system, with the district taking that piece, is that most likely because the Here Comes the Bus app will still continue to not be something that parents can utilize, and probably will never work? I really loved it when it worked, I really did.
Here come the bu, the, the app, Here Comes the Bus, does work when we have a assigned driver for a bus every day, and we're not splitting her out and putting children from bus A, someone bus B, someone bus C.
Absolutely. I should clarify, it does work when it's able to work, and it's fantastic when it works, but...
But there are times when we have to do unique creative solutions because of transportation concerns, whether it be a high absence day, or, or a lack of drivers, and that's where Here Comes the Bus is, doesn't serve the need we necessarily need. Call centers help that. We also get a lot of calls, especially early in semesters, about, I thought my bus stop was at, why is it not there? Or, I thought my bus time was at, why is it not? And being able to address those questions quickly and timely for parents, so that they trust that their child's being taken care of, and has a safe ride to school each and every day.
I really appreciate that as a parent with a student on a bus, because I know that I've had to utilize the call center, and it's been very, very helpful. So, if we can't have the app, and I realize, obviously, the reasons why that app doesn't work, but hopefully someday we'll have that capability. One other quick question, the S T A liaison position, is that, is that a position that was already existent, or is that something that's new? I guess I wasn't really aware we had a liaison position.
That is a position that's in the current agreement, for S T A to fill and provide that. We have, and some of this is on us, but we have allowed S T A to pull that, who was a former driver, to use them as a driver, as opposed to liaison, because it was more important for us to have drivers. The challenge for that is that slows down our ability as a district to problem-solve unique problems that are more than what time is my bus supposed to arrive, or what's my bus stop, because we have to reach out to other individuals, instead of relying on this one individual whose that was supposed to be their position.
Makes total sense. I appreciate all of the provisions that are put into place for this contract to make improvements overall. I think, obviously, this is an ongoing issue, our, you know, we've had several presentations, so I appreciate all of these steps to try to keep just letting our families know that we're trying, we are continuing to put things in place to try to make improvements, even for things that seem out of our control. So, I appreciate the efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And speaking of creative solutions, I think creating a Here Comes the Bus app that works might be a great senior project for some academy or pathway students, in case there's a instructor listening, trying to find a, a project to have their, their pathway work on, hint, hint, wink, wink, that might work out. Anyway, I know one of the, one of the things you mentioned, the cost of this contract is roughly 14 million, which is 10 million, give or take, less than what we're paying this year. I know the call center contract is still yet to be worked out, I'm imagining that's probably not gonna be $10 million, though. So, with the, with the rest of the savings, is there, I guess what I'm getting at here is, one of the problems we've had is, obviously, a shortage of buses, drivers not being reliable. So, do we feel like this contract's going to help alleviate that problem, or is there gonna be, you know, kind of wiggle room left with that, you know, unused money that we're, that we have left this year to, you know, do additional raises or something like that?
Yes, there, there's no real perfect solution. We budgeted just under 24 million for transportation this year. We have not spent 24 million, because S T A's not been able to provide consistent drivers for every route that we had budgeted for. Additionally, we get liquidated damages when they are unable to do that. So, the budget amount and what we actually spend end up being two very different things. We do project a budget for this, extension will be less than the budget for this year, but between the additional budget for the augmented transportation, the second provider who will provide between 30 and 60 routes for us a day to help cover, and then the call center, we do expect to be close to that 24 million. I, I am speaking very early, we opened bids on Friday for the augmented, we're still reviewing to see if they're compliant, we don't have them priced out yet, and we haven't even put the bid for a call center on the street yet. We're still going through bid development with that to make sure, we've never bid that before, trying to make sure we have exactly what we want when we put that out on the street. So, some of that is very, talking very early about budget, and Mr. Ryan does not like it when I play with his money.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other questions from the board? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion? Mrs. Erdenberger has a motion to approve?
Second.
Approve? All right, seconded by Dr. Holman. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Ray, please call the roll.
Erdenberger?
Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Eight aye.
Thank you, the motion carries. Moving on to item J2B, approval of the curriculum alignment for elementary, middle, and high school computer science and technology requirements for all Nebraska schools. The speaker is Mr. John Waddlepool, and others. Thank you.
All right, good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, and members of the board. I'm John Waddlepool, I'm the coordinator of elementary education, and with me is Deanna Moise, the executive director of secondary education. And we are here to provide information about Nebraska revised statute 79-30, 3303, otherwise known as the Computer Science and Technology Act. Tonight, we will share our current status and seek your approval for our next steps. The Computer Science and Technology Act requires the following of school districts, that by 24-25, every district include computer science and technology education in the instructional programs of its elementary and middle schools. By the year 2026-27, districts require each high school student to complete a one semester course in computer science and technology prior to graduation. And beginning in the fall of 2025, school, districts must provide an annual computer science and technology education status report to the school board and the State Department of Education. Nebraska revised statute 79-3303 defines computer science and technology as the knowledge and skills regarding computer science, computer literacy, educational technology, digital citizenship, and information technology. We have many current practices in place across our district, but we also know we have some tightening and additions that need to be done in order to meet the requirements of the law. Computer science and technology is currently part of an elementary student's educational experience. Teachers can use edutyping to teach keyboarding. Our elementary librarians teach quarterly lessons on digital citizenship, cyber safety, and media literacy using common sense media lessons. And all of our schools are encouraged to participate in the Hour of Code, which happens every December during Computer Science Education Week. And although we are currently providing our elementary school students with some opportunities for computer science and technology education, we know we have some room to grow. So, during the 2023-24 school year, we will have teachers continue using edutyping and teaching the common sense media lessons. We will have all of our elementary schools participate in the Hour of Code, which we will write into our pacing guide, so teachers know exactly where it falls within our curriculum. And then, our team will take the 2023-24 school year to evaluate and select a computer science and technology curriculum, and determine if we need to purchase any additional materials to go along with that curriculum in order to meet all the requirements of the law. And our goal is to provide all of our fifth grade elementary students with robotics instruction. Now, I'm gonna turn it over to Deanna to share what middle school and high school will be doing.
Thank you, John. Computer science and technology in our middle schools is currently offered through courses, including Computer Applications 1, 2, and 3, as well as Introduction to Computer Science 7 and 8, and Introduction to Design 7 and 8. The content of these courses includes the computer science components of... The content of these courses includes the computer science components of digital citizenship, which is offered through common sense media, computer literacy through Office 365 and keyboarding and input technologies, and informational and educational technology through cross-curricular projects that engage our students. While we have computer technology courses offered at the middle school level, the guidance in this statute provides us the opportunity to emphasize vertical articulation and ensure that we are building, that we are continually building skills that will support college, career, and life readiness. Implementation steps at middle school include a continuation of our computer science and technology elective course offerings, as well as enrolling all sixth grade students in one semester of computer applications for the 2024-2025 school year. We have two high school courses that currently meet the criteria of the statute. These courses are Foundations of Computing and AP Computer Science Principles. During the 2023-24 school year, schools offering computer science options will continue to do so. For the 2024-25 implementation, Foundations of Computing will be offered at all nine high schools. This is a one semester course that students can enroll in during their sophomore, junior, or senior year based on what is most appropriate in their learning path. This evening, Curriculum and Instruction Support recommends approval of the following to comply with our state statutes. Course sequencing aligned to state adopted content standards for students at elementary, middle, and high schools to include access to computer science and technology course offerings. At the high school level, we are requesting inclusion of a one semester, one credit course to fulfill graduation requirements that will be implemented for the graduating class of It's important to note that that graduation requirement for all students remains at 49 total credits. The computer science and technology course would replace one of the 16 elective credits. Upon approval, we will move forward with our next steps, including reviewing and updating curriculum materials and resources, as well as providing the necessary professional learning for our teachers. We appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? Mrs. Erdenberger?
Thank you very much, Mr. Head. I think all of us had a moment of, oh, no, they're losing another elective, which I'm sure happened in the curriculum department as well. And I can assure you, as a member of the Legislative Committee for the Board last year, we did everything we could, I think it was last year, to make, to try and get the legislature to not legislate curriculum. Obviously, we failed, but we tried. I guess my question to you is, even just tonight, we saw the South High Academies and Pathways, and one academy has a lot of technology in it. Is it possible that some of our students that are selecting pathways or academies that are kind of computer-based, that they will fulfill this requirement without having to give up one of their electives?
If they're asking if they can double dip a course in a pathway and this, in this requirement, the answer is yes.
Excellent. That, that's very good news. And I would just, would somebody tell me what Hour of Code is? Never heard of it before.
It's just an opportunity for kids to, and the elementary level especially, to practice coding. So, they usually do it on code.org. It's a coding program, and they get to learn some of the very fundamental basics of coding.
My father was chief actuary for Mutual of Omaha when computers first came out, and he was doing the coding, and he would turn in his grave if he knew that now elementary kids can do it.
Yeah, kindergarten on up.
That is amazing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Crackey?
My thoughts were the same as, as Jane was saying about the elective credits and how the double dipping can occur. So, maybe as you are presenting this or writing it or something, that element can be included in that so that people like me and others might ask you the question, you already will answer it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Smith?
I'm going to start at the opposite end of my notes, and then I'll get to the bad question. Can or are there dual enrollment credit opportunities for the, the high school level? There were some classes where you had to be sophomore through junior or senior.
So, within the pathways, there will be, that include computer science and technology, we're working towards dual enrollment opportunities. While Foundations of Computing is the one semester course, there is the advanced academic opportunity to take AP Computer Science Principles, which will also meet the graduation requirement.
Okay. Next question is, there gonna be additional training required for our current teachers, elementary level, that'll be necessary in order to teach, to teach these classes?
Yes, it'll depend on the curriculum we end up selecting, but most likely, yeah, there will be professional development, and we'll decide on where that will fit within the curriculum and exactly who will teach it, so...
Okay, and the, the bad question is, do we have enough teachers in this area in order to make sure that this is a, a smooth transition as we roll it out?
Yes, we would use all current staffing, and this wouldn't require the additional staff, like this is in a new position. We get to determine if it's part of our elementary teacher curriculum or where, who exactly teaches it.
All right, we checked all the boxes, thank you.
Can I, can I follow up?
Yep, Ms. Erdenberger?
Can I just follow up? I think that Mr. Smith's question applied to both elementary and middle school and high school. So, you were...
I was speaking to the elementary.
Your, your elementary teachers are good to go. The question that I, was a very good question, is, do we are, you know, what kind of impact will this have on us having to get more staff to be able to deliver the, on this curriculum requirement at the high school level, middle school and high school?
At middle school and high school, we already offer a robust curriculum, computer science and technology courses, especially at the middle school. We don't see any adjustments there. And then, as we add the courses, we may need to, to evaluate, just like we do every year with our staffing, as to what our needs are, but it will be implemented over the course of years as we add the sophomores, juniors, and seniors with that class of 2027.
'Cause the, the issue is not whether we've got the class, the issue is, now that we're requiring every single student to take the class, but yeah, that's, you're right, on a year-to-year basis. Thank you very much.
And you did answer mine, I just wanted to know about elementary specifically because I know how the computer labs and those things go at the various high schools, so I just was worried about our elementary teachers.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other questions? Nope, well, thank you for your work on this, we greatly appreciate it. With that, do we have a motion to approve the curriculum adoption?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Dr. Holman. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mr. Ray, please call the roll. Head?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Eight aye. Thank you, the motion carries. Thank you all again, we appreciate it. All right, next we have item J2C, which is approval of the report of the Legislative Committee, including recommended legislative positions. Ms. Full is still the committee chair in her absence, I'll be delivering the report. And it's attached on the agenda as well with a list of the bills, which there are a number of them. I'll just move through in, in order of the position that we took, that'll probably be the easiest way to do it. So, the following bills, we took a monitor with research approach, it's LB 746, LB 303, LB 495, LB 580, LB 366, LB 650, LB 378, LB 699, LR 30CA, LR 22CA, LB 285, LB 159, LB 638, LR 28CA, LR 29CA, LB 532, LB 429, LB 322, LB 781, LB 651, LB 205, LB 690, LB 499, LB 677. Then the following list, we took an oppose position, LB 165, LB 178, LR 24CA, LB 708, LB 635, LB 380, LB 632, LB 811, LB 681, LB 528, LB 550. And then this final grouping, we took a support position, which is LB 529, LB 169, LB 523, LB 679, LB 344, LB 752, and LB 610. I know that was a long list. Let's see, this past week, we also had Dr. Holman went down and testified on LB 811 for us, so thank you, Dr. Holman, for providing that testimony, we greatly appreciate it. And with that, I will take any questions on the bills. Yep, Ms. Erdenberger?
I have to confess that I can't figure out which bills you're talking about and which ones you've identified as, you know, monitor with research and which ones we are supporting and opposing. On our online agenda, there's a list of presumably all of the bills that you just went through, but it didn't seem to go in the same order. And the list of bills we have on our agenda here doesn't identi- this is the first time I, I don't think I have any other way of knowing whether they are monitor, approve, or oppose except from you just telling us. Did we have that information ahead of time?
Yep, so on the, on the agenda on Spark, it has each bill with the lines, so the top line is LB, so the first one is LB 528.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry, I apologize. You're right, it does, it does have it there.
Yeah, and I, when I read them here, I took them out of, out of this order and just grouped them by position, so the, these are a little bit out of, out of this order, so...
Okay, I, I would like to talk with you about whether it appears that you're just reading off numbers and we're approving or not, and I recognize it would be a huge imposition to actually read the title for each of them. I mean, I do, I'm not, I, I truly understand that, but I think that that is a little bit more clear in terms of us conducting our business in, you know, in public, so...
Yeah, no, I actually wholly agree with that. And so, one, one of the things I think you'd remember from serving on the committee the past two years is, we used to have a Saturday meeting, if you will, at the start of the session where we'd go through every single bill that was introduced and took, take a position on them at the start of the session. This year, the committee is doing a little, a little bit differently and taking positions kind of as we go as the bills evolve, which is why these lists are, you know, 20, 30 bills sometimes versus, I know that the last two years, we'd take a position on, say, 80 bills at the start of the session, and then every week it'd be maybe an additional one or two. So, that's a little bit different process this year as well.
Well, the alternative is having one meeting with all 90 or 200 or whatever, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much. I, I'm really glad you said that 'cause you got me off track.
Sorry about that.
Oh, oh, the question I always ask, are any of these positions we're taking different from the Nebraska Association of School Boards?
A couple of them, yes. So, LR 29CA, it's a constitutional amendment to provide term limits for members of the State Board of Education. They are opposing it, we are monitoring it. Main reason for the, the difference there is, as a, as a state organization, that's more in, directly pertinent to the, to the state organization. For us, it's not, doesn't have a huge impact on what we, we do as an individual school district, so we're just keeping an eye on it. LB 165, which is Senator Geist, it includes elementary and secondary schools in the Nebraska Education Savings Plan and changes tax benefits, that's mainly relating to 529 plans. We're opposing that, there is, there's a monitor position. LB 632, Senator McKinney, it prohibits the suspension of students in pre-K through second grade in a city of the metropolitan class. We are opposing that with a letter and also a meeting with Senator McKinney specifically to talk about, you know, what, what the district does specifically for student dis... Opposing that, NASB is monitoring it mainly because that bill targets and actually only applies to OPS specifically, as we're the only school district in the city of the metropolitan And then LB 681 is the last one, Senator Clements. That one, we are opposing with testimony. Ms. Full will be there next week. The NASB is supporting that bill. That's part of the governor's school funding package, and so we treat, they, they've made it very clear to us that it's, the whole, all of the governor's bills are to be treated as a package, and, well, we don't necessarily have huge problems with that one particularly, we're treating it as a package and opposing the entire thing.
That was really helpful. Thank you very much, President Head.
Ms. Crackey? You have a question? All right, do we have any other questions?
Yes, I just wanted to get clarification to, trying to understand the process here. So, the Legislative Committee, when you guys gather and looking at all of these bills as a committee, you're voting on how we're going to take a stand on these, whether it's oppose, monitor? Is that how it works in the committee?
Correct. So, the committee takes a vote on a recommended position, and then the, the committee recommendations are part of this report, and then the board, the, the entire board essentially votes to either accept the recommendations or, I suppose they could technically be amended as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, any other? Seeing none, since it's a committee motion, it doesn't require a second. Mr. Ray, will you please call the roll?
Holman?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Crackey?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Erdenberger?
Aye.
Head?
Aye.
Eight aye. All right, the motion carries. Next up on the agenda, we have item J2D, the approval of the agreement and superintendent pay transparency notice for Matthew Ray to serve as interim superintendent. Vice President Smith is the Accountability Committee Chair, which leads the superintendent search work. So, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, President Head. So, at our last meeting, the Accountability Committee recommended Deputy Superintendent Matthew Ray as our interim superintendent. We, we recommend Deputy Superintendent Ma- Mr. Ray because this is a critical time for Omaha Public Schools. Our work for students and staff cannot be paused through a transition. Omaha Public Schools is Nebraska's largest school district. We serve 52,000 students every day. We're one of Nebraska's largest employers with 9,000 full and part-time employees. We must get this transition and larger superintendent search right for our community, students, teachers, parents, and educators. Deputy Superintendent Mr. Ray has devoted his entire career to Omaha Public Schools, his children attended and graduated from Omaha Public Schools. He is uniquely qualified to lead us through this time. The proposed contract before our board includes compensation and benefits that are comparable to recent superintendent contracts in our school district. It will begin July 1st of this year. A separate agreement for Mr. Ray's transition responsibilities, the agenda item following this, which I'll discuss later. President Head?
Thank you, Vice President Smith. And at our last meeting, we shared our gratitude for Dr. Logan and our excitement to begin working with Mr. Ray in July. We know the roadmap and our strategic plan of action, and barring any additional questions, we would entertain a motion to approve the contract. Do we have a motion? It's technically a committee motion, so we also don't need a second then. Will you have any further discussion? Nope. Seeing none. Mr. Ryan, can you please call the roll?
Head.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
The motion carries. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is item J2E, the approval of the transition services agreement with Mr. Matthew Ray. Vice President Smith?
So, our community and board members may recall that in previous transitions, incoming leaders visited Omaha Public Schools for transition for consulting days before officially stepping into the job. With Mr. Ray already here, those additional expectations, responsibilities, visits, and meetings will be every day as a, as the transition gets closer. The proposed agreement recognizes that additional time, work, expectations, and execution for Mr. Ray leading up to July 30th. It begins April 1 and lasts through June 30th. Back to you, President Head.
Thank you, Vice President Smith. Seeing as it is a committee motion, we already have a motion. We don't require a second. Do we have any further discussion? All right. Seeing none. Mr. Ryan, can you please call the roll?
Head.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Juarez.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you, Mr. Ryan, and thank you, board members as well. Mr. Ray, congratulations. We'll give you a second if you had anything to say.
Thank you, Mr. Head, Mr. Smith, and board members. Again, I, I can't say how humbled I am about this. It sure is, feels real today, but as I was going preparing for tonight, I, I found something. I found my substitute ID badge from 1996, and big glasses are back, so I just have to highlight that. But as I was, I'm going to pass that along just to show you, because it'll be interesting to get a picture of me today versus 24-25. But I also found Dr. Holman's ID, so I'll pass both those around real quick. But I, but I also want to thank Dr. Logan, too, for her ongoing support as we work towards a successful transition. She's committed. I'm committed. We speak daily, and there's no doubt this will be a success. We know the work. We're ready for the work, and again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. All right. Moving on, we have no receipt of reports this week. You should get rid of that ID.
That's how trusting I am.
All right. Moving on, we have no receipt of reports tonight, and we also do not have closed session. So, the time is 7:42 PM, and the board meeting is officially adjourned.